We will reconvene the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting with the continuation of our board meeting. Present tonight is Mr. Clay Forehand from Madison District, Jeff Black from Western Caroline, Mr. Jeff Sealy from Bowling Green, Ms. Nancy Long from Port Royal, Mr. Floyd Thomas from Mattapani. I'm Reggie Underwood from Reedy Church. The public hearing forum is in the back. We will follow the agenda as printed. We'll start off with our public hearing regarding the proposed tax rates for the calendar year twenty-one for the twenty-two budget. And then we will proceed into our new business discussion and then the adoption of the tax rate for calendar year twenty-one. So at this time, if there's anyone who would wish to speak during public comment, I'm going to open up the public comment for the proposed tax rate for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. Public hearing, excuse me, I keep thinking public hearing. So the public hearing for the proposed tax rate for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one is now open. Please come forward, state your...
Yes.
Okay. 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 Please, please come forward, state your name, your voting magisterial district. And you will have three minutes and please observe the three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Underwood and members of the board. My name is Dr. Paige Carter and I'm a resident and voting member of the Mattapani District. Caroline County is my home. My husband and I have raised our children here. My husband, in fact, has lived within two miles of this building his entire life. To say our roots are deep is an understatement. We are invested. I'm here to ask you to approve the entire eight cents tax increase so that our basic needs as citizens can be met. Public safety must be at the top of the priority list. The national outcry for change is clear. We must hire and retain professionals that are trained and ready to meet the needs of all our citizens equipped with the best practices. We have to be able to attract the brightest and the best police, fire, and rescue workers as they are essential. They run to places where none of us ever hope to be. We are grateful, but we have to put our money where our mouth is. Educators are also essential. In my position with the school division, I am often asked to interview candidates for critical shortage areas. Everything goes great. They're excited. I can't wait to tell them about the county until we talk about the salary. I've been here, that's twelve thousand dollars less than I make right now. I interviewed an amazing candidate for an eleven-month position at the beginning of this school year. In her position, she makes ten thousand dollars more and only works ten months, thirty minutes from here. We cannot keep going like this. You've heard me speak about this and many other school issues for years. Mr. Thomas and I have been chatting about it across email for many, many years. Anyone who knows me in the community knows my stance on education. They know that the children are the most important thing, and this request should not surprise anyone. What is a surprise is how little these things seem to matter to you, the board, over the years. Even the way some of you have talked about our schools in recent days is not in line with your role, which I view to be a good steward and bring good things to our county and to show pride in our county, all of it. I began my plea with a statement of how invested our family is in Caroline County and the well-being of its citizens. We are also willing to make the investment of additional taxes if it means that our police, fire, rescue, and education staff can be compensated at least nearer to surrounding counties. They must have a salary that is commensurate with the fine work that they do. The proposed tax increase would make it possible to get a tiny bit closer to that mark, which is very far away. I am asking you to invest in our most essential services, invest in our children. A tax rate increase is never popular and it's not easy, but it's time. I heard Mr. Sealy say that we want to attract the right companies. The only way to do that is to improve our services as a demonstration of the pride in the work that our essential workers do. I am asking you to approve the tax rate as advertised. Let's make this be the year that you, our elected board, does the right thing for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Ms. Nancy Carson, followed by Bonnie Cannon.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Carson. I probably don't need to introduce myself. Mattapani. I am here in support of the eight cents tax increase. I feel it's gone long enough without a tax increase. And I know the comment is made all the time, my constituents are on a fixed income. Basically, everyone is. We all know the basic amount of money that we get every month and how we have to handle it. So a fixed income doesn't really cut it anymore. There has been no increase in the last seven years, I believe, maybe eight. But we need to have an increase. Perhaps then the reversion funds will be returned to our schools instead of being used at the unfunded projects that you don't have funds for. I support the eight cents tax increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carson. Ms. Cannon.
Honorable Mr. Underwood, Chair, Forehand, Mr. Black, Mr. Sealy, Mrs. Long, Mr. Thomas. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here before you tonight. And I bring you the fact that my husband and I are very opposed to a tax increase. You need to remember retired people in this county that live on a fixed income. We got less than one percent raise this year in January, less than one percent. Last year, I think it was around one percent. So you need to remember, one of these days, you're going to get to my position and you're going to want your taxes raised, what is it, eight cents, up? And also, this is a reassessment year. You're going to do both of these to us? I will give or take with you for one cent, but not any more than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jessie Rollins.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and other members of our Board of Supervisors. Good evening. My name is Jessie Rollins and I'm from the Mattapani District. I don't think there are any new words on why some of us have come to pretty much every meeting and spoke. There's nothing new to say. I support the tax rate because it supports our school. It supports our first responders, and it supports other programs that you fund that have an impact on the children of our community. For those that know me, you know that I'm an advocate for children. And I would do anything that it takes to support the children here, and especially this year, especially after a year of so many adjustments in their lives. Their mental state, their educational, you know, everything that they have had to endure that we as adults have had to learn right along with them. There's nothing in our lives that have prepared us for a pandemic, absolutely nothing. And we understand that things cost. Gas is, what, two dollars, might as well three dollars a gallon, and hallelujah, it's finally coming down. I understand the tax rate is going to cost me somewhere around fifteen dollars a month. And yeah, I'm kind of on a fixed income as well. And so to pass the eight cents would help schools to give the raise, which, because I work for the school, that would benefit me. And so for me, the raise coming in on one side is just something that I put right back into my community. It costs me more than fifteen dollars a month in gas every two weeks to go over and pick up food and bring it over to Bowling Green for families that cannot make it over every other Thursday with our Caroline's Promise Program. And between my husband and I, we joke that we can put fifty miles on our vehicles in about an hour or so and never travel any further than five miles from home. He picks it up, I get off from work, and I deliver around in a circle to make sure that the twenty-five families that we pick up food for get those boxes every couple of weeks. So, you know, another fifteen dollars to support our schools, our first responders, and other programs is worth the investment. Please vote for the tax rate that will allow our schools to give raises and our first responders to be able to keep the people who are committed to teach our children, to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roll. That's the end of the list, however, I will, the public hearing will remain open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? I do have two letters. Nancy, you want to read?
Yeah. This letter is from Lori Robinson, Bowling Green District. Dear Sir, I am writing to ask that the committee would lower the tax rates for the car property tax for this time. I believe that many people in this county, as well as other counties, cannot afford these high tax rates due to this pandemic. Many people are out of work and struggling to pay their bills even with stimulus help. I am disabled, retired, and on fixed income, and I was targeted for money because of other people who have been trying to take advantage of me. My home has been altered without my permission to gain more monies for me to pay extremely high electric bills that I do not agree with. Two, to make a long story short, I've been targeted for people to take advantage of, and this must stop. These, these that have done these things don't realize that God will judge them. I was scanned and targeted for my twenty nineteen and twenty twenty taxes. Many people around here I see are driving expensive vehicles, and I know they aren't paying taxes like I had to pay. And they look like they are on retirement pensions. Again, I ask that you reconsider making these taxes lower. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Lori Robinson.
Lori Robinson, in what district?
Bowling Green.
Thank you. And I also have a letter from Mr. John Bowers from the Reedy Church District. This letter reads, greetings. You may recall that recently I spoke at a Board of Supervisors public hearing supporting the approval slash construction of a fire station at Carmel Church. I feel that the station is indeed in urgent need for our current and increasing population. A necessary consequence of deciding to fund essential public services such as that is now the tough part for the board, imposing a tax increase to be able to go forward and actually be able to write the check to pay for those services. I support the appropriate and necessary increase in taxes to continue, to continue to maintain increase in staffing essential services. Our county cannot continue to improve in every respect without sufficient quality law enforcement, fire, rescue, water and sewer, school, and the like. I respectfully urge each of you to make the tough call and increase taxes to adequately fund these matters. Sincerely, John Bowers, again, the Reedy Church District. And that's the last letter that I have. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding the proposed tax rate? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the proposed tax rate? Last one, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the proposed tax rate? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. And I believe Mr. Forehand, you had a comment, Mr. Forehand?
Um, it was...
We're going to talk about it later in the, in the...
Yeah, that's fine. In case, I just, it's a misunderstanding and it kind of gets lost. But the tax rate, which is currently eighty-three cents, is going to equalize down to sixty-nine cents per one hundred dollars. That's called the equalized rate.
Sixty-nine cents, or eighty-three.
It's going to drop from eighty-three to sixty-nine. And then what we are discussing is an increase of eight cents from sixty-nine to, up to seventy-seven.
Correct.
So unless someone had, if they had a modest increase, say five or ten percent increase in their home value in the last reassessment, you will actually see a tax decrease that, because the average was twenty percent.
Yeah, the average was twenty percent. So at the equalized rate, if you went up twenty percent, you would pay the same thing at sixty-nine cents.
Right.
So if you went up ten percent, at sixty-nine, you would save money.
You will see a tax decrease.
Right.
Even at the new, at the seventy-seven cent.
You would save...
I've done the math. You will see, you will see a, you will see a modest, you know, like two, three dollars a, a month decrease. So math is math, and that's the way we've worked it out. But anyway, I just wanted to make that, that sometimes we think, we already know that the equalized rate is sixty-nine and we're going eight cents from there, but a lot of people in the general public don't realize that there's an equalized rate that's sixty-nine. That's where it's going.
And we'll get, we'll get to that when we have the discussion.
Just want to make sure that's, that's clear for those folks at home and then the audience. Thank you.
Mr. Black, you have any comments this time? Are you going to save until we discuss?
I'll save it.
Any other board members have any comments? At this time, I will, um, we'll move on to your new business. And that's approval of the non-disclosure agreement with Rabahannick Electric Co-op. Mr. Cully, are you going to take that?
We have a non-disclosure agreement with Rabahannick Electric as we work with them, broadband possibilities of expanding, you know, their broadband infrastructure, their fiber infrastructure, not necessarily broadband. But with this, it's been, Ben Emerson has approved this. This is the approved version. So this wasn't the original one we got from REC. With that, I want to be clear, you authorized me to sign this. Then anybody else that I disclose information to is going to have to also sign this similar agreement between us because they really are very strict with any information that they want to share with the county. And they don't want it released. And so we would have to ultimately comply with FOIA, which is all the language that Ben has inserted into it. But it's not just a blanket that if I sign it, that everybody, I can tell things to. So that's just the clarity I wanted to bring to it. But I would, I would encourage you to approve this. We do have some, some things we want to discuss with REC.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the non-disclosure agreement. Cully, if you'll bring it over here, I'll sign it right now. And sadler will sign it because we are working on a meeting with REC as we speak. So we didn't have the meeting until we signed the non-disclosure. So I make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a proper second.
But everybody needs to be mindful of what's, what's talked about and needs to stay in those parameters because they are very conscious of, of what's going on.
We will have no discussion of what's discussed.
Well, there, there's, there's a motion and a proper second to approve the non-disclosure agreement with Rabahannick Electric Co-op. All, is there any discussion now? Now we've got the discussion.
Well, just to add one thing, that, that this will probably have many of the members of the broadband committee sign this also. And, and there may be, as we become public with the broadband committee, there may be times the broadband committee will have closed meetings like the board has. Because there will be discussions that are not ready to be published before, that's all I have.
So it's not a matter of trying to be secretive, it's just a matter of law that some things cannot be disclosed at that time. So it's not that we're trying to do anything untoward, it's just a matter of following proper law and proper protocol. So that's why you have to have that non-disclosure for those folks who are going to be in that, in those conversations. So that's the purpose. So there's a motion and a proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The approval of a non-disclosure agreement with Rabahannick has been approved. Finally, on the agenda is the adoption of the tax rate for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. I think we all have the, have discussed this matter. So I will open it up to the board for your discussion, as well as any motions or discussions as you see fit. So I will start with probably Mr. Sealy, since you like to.
That's fine.
Okay.
Is there any change in the personal property rate, or is that exactly the same?
That is the same. The only rates we are changing are tied to the real estate. So there are things that were already eighty-three, we proposed at seventy-seven. So if you look at the list, I didn't grab it real quick, but there are certain things that the rates are tied to real estate rates. So all of those, all the personal property would remain the same.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Cully, just to be sure, as Mr. Forehand was, was discussing, to make sure everyone is clear that before the assessment, the tax rate was eighty-three cents.
Correct.
After the tax assessment, the approximate increase on value was twenty percent for most houses. That took our equalized rate down to sixty-nine cents and a little, thereabout.
It took it to seventy, but with new construction, we're at sixty-nine. It's very convoluted.
Right, so with, with everything that's occurring in the county, plus our new construction of, I think we've had three hundred-plus new homes permitted. So you're saying, taking that into consideration, the tax rate then would be sixty-nine cents. So that's the equalized rate. And then you're proposing that based on the needs of the county, you're saying that there's an eight cent needed, we should take it to seventy-seven. Am I correct in my explanation?
I, I said we needed eleven cents, but I recommended eight.
Right, right.
Because I thought eleven was too much, but yeah, the, the increases to the budget were eleven cents.
Right, so you, you agree that based on the numbers that you have looked at, that eleven cent would have taken us to where you feel we could go ahead and continue to manage effectively. But we needed eleven, but you say we could possibly, with, with additional revenue or some changes that may come in, eight cent would be appropriate. And I did look at the notice, I think our tax collection is at ninety-five point eight-four percent. That was that way last year. So based on those numbers, if that would increase, we'd have additional revenue. But should that decrease in terms of collection, we may fall a little short, correct?
Correct. But historically, we haven't seen a decline due to the pandemic.
Right, correct. I'm just saying, just giving you both, both sides so we can discuss it openly and transparently.
Correct.
Any board members have any question, comments before we begin to vote on the tax rate? And I'll start with you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Forehand has no comment. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I, I just, I think at the work session, I stated my views pretty clearly that I am fully in support of the eight cents. Ms. Cannon and, and people that don't want the tax increase, I, I understand.
I don't think we should speak directly to anyone.
Okay, all right.
Why don't we just speak to the...
Just in general, I understand that one of the, our jobs is to obviously, we're the, we're the, have the responsibility of the county's, county's revenue and how we spend it. And over the last seven years, which I think it was quoted, and I think that's right, we have not had a significant tax increase. There are, there are some people out there that have argued it's better to increase your taxes slowly, ascend a year, pen year, two a year, and I think Mr. Forehand and I are on board. Sometimes, however, that is not possible when you have a major project or something coming up. So sometimes you do need more, a more significant tax increase. Some of the things I've seen out on social media since our discussion has been that the county is not pro-business. And I think Mr. Forehand did an excellent job in addressing that. The county is, I don't, I, I know very few businesses that we have, we, we want the businesses. We, we don't, we do not, we're not anti-business. We are very pro-business. We understand business tax revenue will bring more tax revenue, which makes everyone, everyone succeed. The more tax revenue we have, the more we can give to schools, the more we can give to sheriff's office, the more we can give to all the programs we have out there. So when I see that stuff, I get a little disappointed because I don't think people realize Mr. Forehand kind of addressed that very well, that I think this board in general, all six of us, we have disagreements. I think this board in general has been very, very pro-business. We have some disagreements on certain individual businesses, but overall, we have been pro-business. So it's not like we're saying to businesses, stay out. We're not at all. The widening of Lady Smith Road, we're, we're doing that, we're doing that for the purpose of hoping that a bunch of businesses come into that area. That's an investment that we're putting in. So to do an anything, a tax increase, yeah, it is difficult. But I think many of the speakers tonight hit it, like we have, we have a sheriff's department that is really, really far behind today. We have a feature five percent raise that we, we want to cover. It's a, it's a state mandate. We have projects for water and sewer for the growth of this county that will set us up for, for years to come for sewer pipes that we have to do. We have a fire department that we are desperately need down in Carmel Church. It is, it helps the whole county, it helps Bowling Green, it helps Lady Smith. Having that fire station down in Carmel Church is going to be, it's going to benefit everyone, not just the Carmel Church area. And so there's all these projects that we have to do. And I know sometimes we get into national politics about, you know, well, this, this party wants to raise taxes, this party, you know, is about not taxing. I get that, but sometimes it's just common sense. Sometimes you get a bill and you got to pay it. And we up here as a board, we voted for a lot of these projects to come in. And we've agreed that we, the sheriff's department needs a raise. We've agreed that the schools deserve the five percent. So it's now time for us to pay the bill. So that's my comment. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to echo a few things from Mr. Black. The state did give us several mandates for sheriff's office, all the, the comp board salaried sheriff's deputies. Most people don't realize that that's just half of the deputies. And, and again, it's three, for every three, for the three percent they give us, the county has to match it too. Schools are in the same situation, and they're paying basically for two-fifths of the teachers, of the standard equality teachers. For every, they're giving, for the three percent they give the county, for the schools, we have to match it two percent. Fire and rescue isn't supported by the state. Fire and rescue is supported by county, by the county budget. Count, fire and rescue and the sheriff's office, we're trying to get those pay scales locked together so that those entities can each know where their scale is and be able to hire people. We are in a deficit situation. As the sheriff said the other night, they're having a slow response time, which I thought was an interesting way to point out some of the problems they're having. Fire and rescue EMS is in the same situation. You've got to be able to hire people. When you look at what the state has done with, with teachers, sheriff's office, and then you look at everybody else that you have in the county, nobody wants to sit next to the person that got five percent and the other person didn't get anything. I think at this point in time, we have to be equitable and fair to everybody. It's not an easy time, and it's not an easy thing to do. Nobody likes to hear eight cents. Mr. Thomas and I have been here a long time. The biggest tax increase we did, which was on the referendum, was eleven cents. Three of that was for, was for a radio system, and eight cents of that was for school, for school construction at the time. It was probably the single, single biggest tax increase that was ever done. But with the state mandating and saying they've given everybody a five percent raise, they put not just Caroline County, but every locality in the state in the same situation. We're all looking at our budgets, looking at what's going on, and saying, if we don't do this now, then the state doesn't give the three percent, teachers don't get it, sheriff's office doesn't get it. And it's a, it, it goes across the board to fire and rescue and to all the other county employees that work just as hard as everybody in the room that's here. in the room that's here, that, that goes to work in the county every day. So from that perspective, I'm looking at, we, we have to be equitable and fair. Nobody likes this, but it's the cards that we have on the table today, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Uh, Mrs. Long?
We've done what we needed to do. If we're going to give raises, money has, has been somewhere, and I am fully in support of doing this. Uh, it has been, I believe, eight years, so if you look at it, you know, we're talking, um, a penny a year increase in tax, that's due to good staff, good management, and being picky about our businesses. Uh, to, to touch on that again, we could get businesses in here, but they're not gonna be the businesses you want to live next to. They're not gonna necessarily, we've turned down dirty, environmentally unfriendly businesses that showed any interest before they even got going. Remember the landfill? Uh, we don't, that's not what we need in our county. We need businesses that are going to comply with our plan for the future and be clean for our, our citizens and bring us money at the same time. And I think we can do that by, by showing that we care about our planning and to, to continue to be proactive as far as looking for the right businesses to fit the Caroline County's character. So, uh, you know, it shows that if your property values went up, that's great, that's more investments in your pocket, that looks good to go to the bank for something, and we need to raise these taxes. It, it's time to do it.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a few things. One is, one is back to the pro-business and to make sure folks understand, I am personally working right now with Mr. Under, uh, with Underwood, well, sometimes with, uh, Mr. Underwood, but Miss, with Mr. Wilson on three very large projects that would benefit the county greatly, and without saying anymore, because I know Mr. Wilson wouldn't want me to, uh, I, I think we have some great things that are coming in the county. Unfortunately, those won't come until probably next year at the earliest, uh, but they are coming, and, and, and those are great things that are gonna help the tax base. Uh, with respect to the budget, I, I have time and time again, said I support schools, I support salary, uh, increases for the teachers. If it were up to me, I'd spend less money on facilities and more money on teacher salaries, which is what I said at the last board meeting. Um, I also believe the budget as it is, has the, the right amount of raises for sheriff deputies. Uh, the sheriff is, you know, back there, he will tell you that I've talked to him on, on more than one occasion about providing additional funding for training, and that's something I mentioned in Mr. Mosier's last, but the budget starts, starts now with salaries, and, you know, we'll have to address the additional training and things like that, um, you know, at a future point in time. The, re, um, excuse me, the reality is, I think we all agree on the budget as the budget's been, been presented, which is the good thing, it's just how we get there. Um, I believe that we should lessen the impact to the citizens of the county and, and not go with the full eight cents, but use some funding from the uh, unencumbered balance to help balance the budget, but we would approve everything that's been in Mr. Cully's budget. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have, uh, probably three comments. First, uh, social media. I had a person call me about some of the things they read on social media, and I simply asked the question, have you looked at the budget and do you know what's even in the budget? And the response was no. I think first you have to look at the budget and understand the budget as to what's there. And for God's sake, you can't believe everything that's on social media. I hope you all know that by now. In terms of being pro-business, there has not been one business that we've turned down that the citizens of the county has wanted. We wanted the six thirty-nine projects, but the corporations themselves said there were not enough rooftops in several instances. We've already approved three hundred plus permits for housing. So infrastructure has to come along also. With the three hundred houses comes additional people in the county, which means we have to have firefighters, we have to have EMS, we have to have the sheriff's deputies to, to be available, and we have to have schools to meet the need. My question is, again, as Mr. Thomas says, how do we get there? From a corporate perspective, and I was reading the couple, uh, emails from the General Assembly, or a couple comments back and forth, the, the role of this board is to look from my perspective, is to look at this truly as from a business perspective as well. Where does the money come from? And I listened to all of the comments. And I am concerned that an eight cent tax increase is too much. I'm also concerned that I don't want to take any money out of the unencumbered balance, because it puts us in a very negative position in terms of borrowing money, should something happen. From this chair, my position is that we all try to tighten our belts with our budget to be as mindful of each penny as possible, just like we do in our home, us to be mindful. So I do think that eight cent is too much. I think that we're going to have a few dollars come back that we took out of the unencumbered balance, that I think may help us a little, but it's really not going to get us to where we are, we need to be. Mr. Cully indicated, we really need eleven cents, so we're really already behind the eight ball by a million dollars. Each penny is three sixteen, three hundred and sixteen thousand. So if we believe in what he's doing with the budget, then we're already under the gun for nine hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars already. So that puts us at a, at a disadvantage going into the budget. So it does, it does concern me, and I, um, I listened to the people in my community, and I listened to, um, a couple comments tonight about people being on fixed income. And whether you like it or not, the county is made up of folks who are on fixed income, and that's just a reality. The last rule, Sebastian, loan ninety-five is Caroline County. You look at Spotsylvania, their budget is huge. You look at Hanover to the south, their budget is huge. Yes, we want to keep up with, uh, with the pay, but it's not going to be easy. Um, it's, it's not really going to happen that we're gonna be able to continue to keep up with Spotsylvania or Hanover or Stafford, because their tax base is so huge. King George real estat, real estate tax is, one cent is less value. But you look at Spotsia, a penny is a million dollars. They raise taxes one penny, it's a million dollars to their revenue. It is not the same, and we chose Caroline County. I chose to live here forty-some years ago. That was my choice. I also chose to work in Caroline County until I left after fifteen years. Not because of more pay or I just wanted a bigger theater to work with there. But I brought it back here to Caroline County. So I said all that to say, I, I am torn knowing that we do need money for all of these entities, and I just cannot take money out of the unencumbered balance. I, I just can't. So I'm going to continue to work with the, uh, board members, and if there are no more comments, I will take a motion based on the proposed tax rate. And, sorry, Mr. Cully, please.
In, in your motion, we'd appreciate if you would also approve the commissioner's twenty-seven percent of the PPTRA, uh, percentage. Remember, we have to adopt that every year too. That would be down from twenty-nine percent, um, in twenty twenty. Personal property. You know, we receive a fixed amount
The money to get back from the state.
From the state, and we divide that over all the cars, so as people buy more and more new cars, there's less and less of the two-point-three million dollars to divide up. Where that started at seventy, got frozen, it was, original was gonna be at a hundred percent, but they never gave us a hundred percent, frozen at about seventy-seven percent of the value back when they froze it in two thousand four, five, six, whenever that happened, but anyway.
No car tax.
No, from the no car tax, right, right. Um, so, um, it would include that in your motion, the PPTRA, uh, uh, percentage of twenty-seven percent. It's on the back page of your memo.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. So in your package under exhibit number one, I believe, is the proposed tax rates for 2021, that Mr. Cully is speaking, I believe, I'm sorry. Under agenda, under item number three is the proposed 2021 tax rate, and that's what he's talking about, the twenty-seven cent proposed by the commissioner of revenue. Any more discussion on the proposed tax rate? Hearing none, gentlemen, how would you like to proceed? Gentlemen and ladies, excuse me. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Black.
I would like to make a motion that we, um, accept the Cully's proposed tax rate of seventy-seven cents for an increase of eight cents from last year, the proposed, uh, real estate tax, and how would you, and how would you, Mr. Cully, how would you like me to phrase the second part?
DPR.
Just to, uh, adopt the CPR. Okay, and the rates that are presented in this panel.
Okay, so it's been, um, moved that we approve the eight cent tax rate, as well as the personal property rate and all the tax, proposed tax rate for 2021 in the memo. Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a second by Mr. Forehand. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
There's a vision in the House. Mr. Forehand? Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
I vote nay.
And I vote nay as well. Motion carries. Four to two. The proposed tax rate is adopted. That is all the business that is on the agenda for tonight. I will take a motion to adjourn until.
No, we, we, we need a motion to recess until next Tuesday at six o'clock. We're doing the Mr. Cully, we're doing the budget that evening?
Right.
Will we finalize the budget that evening?
That, that would be up to the, the board. Um, it would be good to finalize as much of it to, to tell the schools, because they've got to go back and put their whole budget back together and bring it back for ultimately to be appropriated, and they're supposed to be offering contracts in May, and code requires us to do it by May, but the school portion, so how, if we can get there, we would encourage it, but obviously you don't have to do the budget till the June thirtieth, but.
So we'll recess until the twenty-seventh of April, six o'clock in this room.
But it's easier in this room.
Yeah, but before we go, I, I think it's important to make sure people understand where we were with the budget, and we all agree on the budget for the most part. That includes the five percent raise to teachers, that includes the public safety salaries, so we'll be giving raises to law enforcement, fire and rescue. Uh, I don't think there'll be any other key changes in those areas when we adopt the budget.
We, 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 the tax rate, so that puts the money in the budget for Mr. Cully.
Yeah, but we could still move it, I mean, we can still move it around, but what I'm saying is, we're not gonna move those things around.
We are not gonna move those.
Okay.
So there's a motion to recess until April twenty-seventh at six P M. Is there a second? We have, no. There, again, there's a motion by Mr. Tom, Thomas, I'm sorry, Mr. Sealy, to, uh, recess until April twenty-seventh at six o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Black? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are, we are recessed until April twenty-seventh. Thank you.